Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can submit a virtual blue card that will be posted at 4:00 PM on Monday, April 12th, 2021, on the district's website. Or in person by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary that will be read by the board secretary. The board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times.
And I have instructed trustee Moses, the normal limit that we impose is three minutes. If we see some comments that look like they're going to be longer than three minutes, to summarize when we're approaching a rough three-minute mark.
All right, brace yourselves. This is long. Mrs. Lorena Sheheen of Dearborn says, "Close elementary schools. I support shutting down elementary in-person learning. Michigan is the epicenter of the new variant and children are driving this spread. Also, a large percentage is asymptomatic. The infection rate is very alarming. We need to do something." Ms. Muhammad of Dearborn says, "I'm not comfortable with my kids going to school." Ms. Farah Bazee of Dearborn says, "The state of Michigan is at the highest peak since November, 20% for COVID cases. We send our kids to school hoping that they can get something out of a normal education, but it's not fair for us to send our kids to school with worries about them catching anything, or better yet, bringing it home to the elderly. School needs to shut down until we can get the numbers low again. And please tell the people that are comparing us to other districts that we are not Northville or Nor-Vai. We are Dearborn." Mrs. Donna Hassan of Dearborn says, "The CDC chief urges Michigan to shut down. We are at 22% positive rate. The school shouldn't be open past 20%. Leave our children at home where they are safe or most safe." Mrs. Malak Hassan of Dearborn says, "If the CDC is urging Michigan to shut down due to the fact that we're one of the worst states in the nation during the pandemic, why would we send our kids to schools? To be in any form of risk with such a short period of time left in this school year." Mrs. Ferduz Salman of Dearborn says, "With the rising cases of COVID-19, the Michigan being the state with the most cases, schools should shut down again. It's better and safer for our community. Some people will not be able to handle the virus if they get it. I think it's best to close schools again and wait until cases and the environment around us improve. Thank you." Mr. Ali Bazee of Dearborn says, "Our children need to continue to be in person. I have three children in elementary school and they're all so happy to be back. I can't imagine what would happen if you guys decide to switch to fully virtual. Elementary students do not have the foundations to work on their own at home. We work with our caregivers, are not able to help all the children at all times. My children constantly need help and we have gone through two babysitters that we were not able to keep up. We are exhausted. I always see parents commenting on Facebook posts when Dearborn's schools post updates and see them saying that the school should close. Those parents had the option to be 100% virtual and they should have chosen the option. It is ridiculous how you all keep listening to the people who do not listen to you guys when you said over and over again to sign up for virtual if they're not comfortable going back in person. Elementary school children do not spread the virus as much as the older children. There is no reason why elementary students should not be in school full-time like other districts. We are fed up. Our children are not getting the education they deserve. One of my children is in kindergarten and she is bored out of her mind when she has to log in virtually. We have to force her to log in or log on. She is so sick of sitting in front of the computer. Enough is enough. Our voices need to be heard." Ms. Noor Hassan of Dearborn says, "Good evening. My name is Noor Hassan, a 10th grade, the LP student from Fortson High School. I would like to thank all of the administration and staff for everything they do to make sure that I'm succeeding. The support that I have received throughout the year from Mrs. Al Qadri, Mr. Mustafa, Mrs. Kostavoski, Mrs. Zaidan, I think, or Zindan, and all of my teachers is something to be mentioned. I just want to thank them and I would like them to know that I really appreciate everything they have done. Knowing that I have their support during these hard times has helped me to get through my 10th grade with a 4.0. Thank you." Ms. Leila Bazee of Dearborn says, "With cases so high and many cases at schools, we should reconsider sending our kids to school. Safety should always comes first. This is just more confusing for the children." Mrs. Linda Nasser of Dearborn Heights says, "As a parent of three elementary students, I've never seen my kids so happy to be back in person, to see their teachers and friends. Our school has been on top of making sure that kids are adhering to all of the CDC guidelines and are doing a fantastic job, might I add. Our kids need to be in school environment. Please don't take these last few weeks of school we have left away. Keep schools open." Mrs. Zainah Hamid of Dearborn says, "Elementary students need to be in the classroom. They need that not only for educational aspect, but for their mental and social well-being. The early elementary years are the building blocks in education. Students who have learning disabilities and special needs are falling further behind and are struggling. They need consistency, stability. I understand that concern for the growing number of COVID cases, but the numbers in Dearborn have been always high. For those parents who continue to post on social media that we need to close schools because of the growing numbers, I say that to you, that you had several opportunities as a parent to make the choice for your children to be virtual. So therefore, you no longer have an argument to make. There have been no outbreaks in elementary schools. The cases of COVID have been amongst youth sports and in the community. We cannot overlook the great job of our principals, teachers, and staff are doing to keep our children safe in the classroom. Every minute our children spend in person is valuable. We are already losing valuable time to needless state testing. Our teachers are working extra hard, doing double and triple the work that we need to recognize this by doing our part or our job as a community. If anything, elementary students need more time in the classroom." Ms. Melissa Perizwara of Dearborn says, "Good evening. I want to share my concern with you regarding the current COVID crisis and the decision to keep the schools or Dearborn schools open. I work at a hospital in the heart of Detroit and have treated countless ICU patients, witnessing firsthand the devastating effect of this disease. I viculate between sadness and anger as I see the number spike and hospital units overflowing yet again. I have been so proud of the work our governor and the Dearborn School District have done over the course of the last year to keep our community as safe and as healthy as possible. The school district had strict guidelines for a back-to-school plan amid COVID. Only when those metrics were met did the school district reopen. I'm highly concerned about why those metrics are not being adhered to now. I only have one child in the school system presently. I'm disheartened when I listen to the 60-second messages that discuss how well the schools are doing to provide a safe environment. My son, freshman at Salford High School, describes a very different scene at the school. He was very excited to start the hybrid model at the beginning of March. He was thrilled to be in a building to learn face-to-face. Unfortunately, this sentiment changed pretty quickly. Although he feels very safe in the classroom where all the students are wearing a mask, he describes a very different setting in the hallways. He reports that the hallways are not being monitored and are far too many students are pulling down their masks or not wearing them at all when moving through the hallways between classes. He reports that many kids yelling and having fun with their masks off during this time. He feels as though teachers stay in their classrooms during this time to avoid possible exposure to themselves and don't want to police the hallways due to the risk. My son chose to stay home and do only remote learning the week before spring break due to these concerns at school. It was even worse during baseball conditioning that occurred on Wednesday afternoons and Saturday mornings. These were held in the gym prior to spring break and the majority of kids did not wear masks and mask rules were not enforced by coaching staff present. Masks were also not enforced at outdoor practices. Although they were outside, they were in huddles in which the athletes would gather around to listen to their coach, masks were not enforced at this time either. It was only after multiple cases were reported in the baseball team did the coaching staff begin enforcing the mask rule." Yep, the comment keeps on going, but on the same lines of asking that the vaccines are not effective for another six to eight weeks. But it is, and she ends with, "It is imperative to adhere to these guidelines that were set initially to keep our schools and community and students safe." Mrs. Samar Hamayed of Dearborn says, "It is crucial that our children go back to normal learning. Enough is enough. This is a pandemic that is supposed to be progressing. We should be preparing for full-time in-person school year. CDC has changed guidelines with children and said three feet social distancing is fine and that children are less prone to those issues. Parents had a choice to make three months ago. This limbo that we're putting our children through is not healthy. If parents want to send their kids back to school, let them make this decision. We're supposed to be in progressive phase of this pandemic." Mr. Muhammad De Baja of Dearborn says, "Schools should remain online until COVID cases or positive COVID tests decrease. Students and teachers are at risk contracting the virus and spreading it to their family. There is no beneficial reason for students to attend the in-person schooling during this time. With only a couple of months of school left before the summer break, everyone should take better precautions and stay home, including students and teachers. We have been online for over a year now. A couple of months will not hurt anyone. The only way anyone can get hurt is now by carelessly sending students and teachers back to the school while cases are rising. Take better care of your teachers, I'm sorry, take better care of your children at home and they will not lose out on any learning. Some parents have just proved that they are incapable of taking care of their children during a worldwide pandemic. However, this should not put others at risk because you want to send your children back to school so eagerly. Going back to school right now is not going to make your child jump a grade. Be better parents, help your children with their homework at home, and do your part in helping us getting this virus go away. Opening schools will only lead to more outbreaks within the community and schools and will only shut down again. Thanks, Mardar." Ms. Sina Sairi of Dearborn says, "No school." Mrs. Munamashrah of Dearborn says, "Last week, we were at positivity rate at 18.3%. It has tripled since the decision was made to open. We are still at an E-rating, yet the district and the board continue to abandon the signs in favor of keeping open for reasons that do not align with safety and student interests. This week, positivity rate so high and the spread of new variants, 10 now in Michigan, we should not be in person. However, testing season has begun and the message is clear: testing over safety. It is disappointing and reckless that schools are open. The board is an elected body that should stand up for its people. We need to pause in all in-person learning until the spread decreases. The board should do its duty since the district has abandoned theirs." Ms. Leila Bazee of Dearborn says, "Keeping our children home and doing our part in reducing the spread of the coronavirus is the only moral decision to make here. Once we see an improvement in the numbers of our community as a whole, we can consider such circumstances. As of now, no teacher, student, staff member, or elderly parent needs to be put at risk for a few eager parents ready to get their kids out of the house." Mrs. Mulanirio of Dearborn says, "The board approved metrics for a safe return to school at the beginning of the year, but no longer follows or no longer follow those metrics. The positivity rate is the highest it has been since the school year has begun, yet it is being ignored. Even if most parents or, excuse me, if most of the staff received the vaccine, the students have not. Why are we putting the staff and students at risk with the rate of transmission so high in the community?" Mr. Dries Alhassan of Dearborn says, "Hello. I believe it is Governor Whitmer who have suggested that we close down. Whether it was recommended or not, the health and the lives of the student matter more than the in-person or being in-person. I, as a parent, would prefer my child's life over them being in person. I understand that it's difficult. It is difficult for me to have a chaotic household with four children, but as chaotic as it is, as long as they are safe, that's the priority. I also know student mental health is big. My daughter has felt overwhelmed by her work multiple times. So I urge you to consider things that may help with that. A lot of people her age are stressed out and have issues regarding mental health in general and as caring administrators who do their best for their students. I know that you will find a way to help the students. My main concern is now getting schools closed. It's been known cases that have increased once more and having schools shut down will aid in decreasing the cases. There are multiple risks, while some may recover, the elderly and those with weak immune system cannot. The risks far outweigh the benefits. Thank you." Ms. Reem Azair of Dearborn says, "Elementary schools are an important part of the infrastructure of communities as they provide safe and supportive learning environments for students. They provide essential building blocks for all levels of schooling and life. It is where children build their social, emotional, cultural, and cognitive foundations for their futures. How's Dearborn Board and its members going to explain to these kids when they fall behind or become antisocial, less sharp, slower failures in preceding years that they did was right? We, as parents who made you responsible, hold you accountable. This is coming from a parent who has time to monitor and help her kids' education. Some parents can't. There is no reason why they are kept out of school. All around the state, elementary and other levels are open. You have no sensible objective to do so. Health and the virus, is that what you are preaching of you failures? Shame on you. You know that the kids this age are immune, are more immune. You know that the teachers and the school leaders take their precautions. Is it because our buildings are old? You don't want to put any effort, the money to fix them. I beg you to stop and consider the future of your kids. Kids who have been given to you to take care and monitor build their success. This is enough. Our levels have dropped drastically. Shame on you. Our kids need to go back, period. Stop your bureaucracy. This is built on no scientific grounds. We have lost so many families in other districts, to other districts and private schools. How many is it going to take you to wake up? Get out of your comfort zones and start doing what we elected you to do." Mrs. Zainab Zaban says, "I would like it virtual." Mr. Tofiq Nehme said, "I think the rest of the school year should be 100% virtual with the numbers of cases rising in the state and currently the highest in the country. I don't feel safe with my kids in school." Yes. Sure, go ahead, please.
Mr. Maury of Dearborn, "What changed from last April to this April that allows for schools to remain open? If Dr. Maleko doesn't have any children in Dearborn Public Schools, I do. And with the community transmission rate of 20%, it is beyond reckless to risk our students and teachers. Until the vaccines have all been approved for school-aged kids, I don't see how in good conscience you could remain open like this. How many students have been infected in Dearborn Public Schools? How many teachers? What are you waiting for to close on site? Do we have to have casualties before you do the right thing?" Next comment is from Yasemin. "Yasemin, students should go back to virtual learning due to the rise in COVID cases. I hope you guys can take that into consideration because we are facing a public health crisis. We have to protect the vulnerable, especially since children can be asymptomatic carriers and it can affect those who are vulnerable." Mr. Joseph Shannon Dear of Dearborn, "It is extremely disappointing that the board and the district leadership have decided to continue risking students' families' lives by keeping the district open. Even more egregiously, the district has been aggressively pushing the testing happening this week, claiming that it is necessary and required. Many students have told me that they were told they need to come. This is absurd for several reasons. It is not safe to pack students into rooms for hours at a time to take a test. The numbers are as bad as they've been this whole pandemic and they are affecting young people, more young people than before. None of these tests are necessary. The SAT isn't even being looked at by a wide majority of colleges and universities. Further, it's been known for years that the SAT acrual measures is the socioeconomic status of the family and does not mean anything in terms of how the students are able to do after graduation. The fact that the SAT is required for graduation is absurd. Get rid of the test requirements. If colleges don't even care, why do we? Why are we wasting district time, money, and resources on the pointless exercise? Finally, if data is what you want, luckily, teachers spend a lot of time collecting data. There may be other ways to collect data that isn't rooted in eugenics and racist ideology. I'm sorry, ideology. Please do better as a board. You are elected to run the schools to benefit the students, their families, and the community as a whole. Current practices do not meet those criteria." I condensed that comment a little bit. Next comment's from Marwa Musa of Dearborn. "My son is enjoying going to school and he knows that we will get back to Phase 1. He will get sick and will never go virtual from home." Mr. Albidani, "Close the high schools and also Henry Ford Early College. Keep the elementary schools open." Mrs. Anwar Eldaba from Dearborn, "Please don't put our little kids at risk. Close the school. Let's go back to full virtual, just like January, and stop this A and B group schedule. We were doing much better before the hybrid schedule." Next is from Jodri Anderson. "Why are the students in person when the positivity rate as of Thursday is 20%? When we had to wait for in-person, the in-person rate to fall below 5% in the first place." Want to take that over?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you for that. Took a little bit of break. Ms. Amelia Tennant of Dearborn says, "Dear board members and superintendent, I'm writing to implore you to suspend in-person learning for students and teachers immediately. The combined cases for April 11th and 12th were nearly 1,000 today for the state of Michigan. The CDC is begging the governors to shut down the state. I realize that you believe that teachers are vaccinated, which ensures their safety, but that simply is not enough and still not or cannot ensure the safety of your teachers' families, students, and teachers who chose not to or cannot be vaccinated. I also realize that you are under pressure from some parents as well as luring of state money to remain in person. However, I ask you that are you willing to put a monetary value on the lives and the health of your students and teachers by refusing to listen to the scientists involved? You claim to put students and education first and so prove that you believe this by listening to the science that you teach your students every day. The community is asking you to put them and their health over money and politics. Thank you." Ms. Amged Munadeen of Dearborn says, "I live in the Oakman area school. I live in the Oakman school area. We take pride in our school's cleanliness and appearance. Our engineer and custodian have done an excellent job. We are very upset that our school parking lot and playground is covered with clothing and houseware because of the donation bins. We are asking the school to have them removed. I'm also concerned with the decision of the district that has made about testing and children in the buildings. Our positive rate is too high in Dearborn. I have opted out my children out of testing. I am being told that it can affect my child's chance of getting into advanced math, which is not fair. Please consider our children's health when making your decisions." Ms. Reniem Haddad says, "Dearborn schools and other districts have began rolling back into the building in February and the numbers have increased steadily since. Dearborn COVID cases are numbers are consistently 1.5 times or two times higher than the surrounding neighborhoods regardless of the population size or density. This is not a sports issue. As if we were, we need to seriously question why participation in sports is more important than the public health of the community. We are sitting at 18% plus positivity rate and have chosen and have been inbred for the new cases and positivity data over the two weeks. And now, and the district does not even have community ratings posted to reference, which I believe Dr. Maleko said we will use instead of the positivity rate due to its comprehensive nature. If they were posted, they would show that we are and have been at an E-rating. What data do we need now before to decide our very viable virtual learning program is the safest option? Cases and children are surging up to 300% higher. That is not a coincidence. You have heard from a handful of children and parents who have outright refused to acknowledge the validity of online curriculum being delivered by our district's wonderful teachers. And these are mental health concerns during a global pandemic where every single person is experiencing mental health concerns. And now splitting the teachers' attention between one group online and one group in person is doing a disservice to either one or all or the other at all times. One teacher could never give both groups the amount of attention they both deserve. The community spread is out of control, the variants are more contagious, and the precautions are only going to help if people follow them. Kids in secondary schools are not following precautions as well as daily as they do when important administrators are visiting the building. We have the capabilities to do this online and keep people safe. We've shown that." Ms. Siam Albinas of Dearborn says, "Other districts with 25% of the cases we have are going back to virtual. What do these districts know that Dearborn doesn't? Or is it that they just care more about their teachers and students?" Mr. Tracy Bazee of Dearborn says, "I just have to say how proud I am of our food staff. These amazing..." These amazing women and men have been working so hard through the whole pandemic. Sometimes it's easy to forget how hard it is to feed our kids. The school sending home, the school is sending home food has lifted a huge burden. Of me and a lot of thousands of others in the community. Improvement over the last year and a half with FSE has been astounding. We truly have a world-class food program, thanks to the whole food program leaders and workers. Mister Wilson said, I'm concerned for the safety in students of and staff. The rise in COVID numbers create a safety risk for our community. The CDC recommends that the stu- the state shuts down. Show the community and the staff that you care about their health and the safety and consider shutting down the schools. Until our numbers are under control. Miss Annie Brown of Dearborn says, going back to school this week, there are many employees. Out and not enough substitutes to fill in the absences. What is being done to remedy this situation? Mrs. Connie Kazan of Dearborn Heights says, our children should not be back at school. Elementary students should be full-time. Dearborn Public School states that our children come first. In fact, they don't come first. It seems that you push our education or our children on the side. And have them focusing online rather than being in uh, one-on-one with their teachers. These children are all taking a toll by not having socializing and proper education. Any medical doctor will tell you that a child sitting at a computer for more than fifteen to twenty minutes is unhealthy. It causes so many medical conditions. At the end of the day, it came down to our children, the, the. They should be in school one hundred percent and parents are not certified to teach the children, nor they are certified to be an educator. If you know what's best for the children, then have them or have them start back up school. Uh, Mrs. Amanda Said of Dearborn says, the students need to go back five days a week, full-time, eight thirty to three thirty. The hybrid is a joke. Three days online, one week off, kids needs to have consistency. They need face-to-face interaction. School is more than academics. It is socialization, conflict resolution. It's getting up every day with purpose. Sitting at home in front of a screen is not healthy. If things don't go back to normal, my kids will be attending private school. Mister Benjamin Federico of Dearborn says, please do not stop in-person learning and the spring sports. The children should have the in-person option available. There are only a small number of students in my daughter's classes. With wearing a mask and the other precautions Dearborn Schools has done, I feel the risk of transmission is low to none. The toll of the mental health of our children has been significant and this should be considered. As far as sports is concerned, playing outdoors with a, with a mask is safe and the kids should be allowed to play. The addition of weekly testing has added another layer of safety. We shouldn't punish school, we shouldn't punish the kids because of the adults in the community not following the guidelines. The parks in the area have plenty of kids playing by other kids outside their household without masks. I've been to restaurants for carryout and people are not wearing masks. To blame the children for the rise in our cases and restrict them from being in-person learning and sports is not fair to them. Mrs. Mah- Maharamadon of Dearborn says, why is gym class online and not in person? Kids need exercise and gym is very important for their health. I see no difference in the kids having recess, especially with. Especially when it will be half of the class at a time. The weather is nice. Out and gym can be outside instead of being indoors. Please have gym in person and please don't wait until the fall to do this. The kids need the gym to be in person. Miss Miriam Bazee says, I'm unbelievably disappointed. In the Dearborn's handling of the impact of COVID nineteen over the past two, three weeks. Neighboring districts informed staff and families prior to the spring break that the week after would be virtual. This allowed families and staff in other districts to plan accordingly. Meanwhile, staff and families were sent scrambling when the decision was made days into the break. The writing was on the wall the weeks prior. We all knew wh- where the numbers were headed and it was clear that many families were going to be traveling. Secondly, to resume in-person classes when the positivity rate are all high. And some hospitals are nearing capacity to administer s- standardized tests. That will benefit no one is an absolute shame. The district is not putting students first and should rethink their tagline. The school board needs to intervene as the administration seems to be more focused on appearance and testing. Uh, some families are aware that they cannot opt out of testing. However, many have been misled to believe that tests are mandatory. This is false belief that caused parents to send kids to school even though they were not comfortable with it. Dearborn Schools need to actually put students first and create a culture of honesty with families, community and staff. Sure, thank you.
Tom Zadarwish, as a pharmacist, I would like to highly recommend closing the schools since although the kids might be asymptomatic. They can still transmit the virus to others, especially that the infection rate is very high among young people lately. Thank you. Luke Hatrick of Dearborn, thanks for allowing me to go to school at least part-time. I realize that COVID numbers in Dearborn are high and the positivity rate is probably the highest we have seen since the pandemic started. When the vaccine is becoming more widespread, this is not the same pandemic it was when the board set its reopening criteria. Hospital capacity is still about seventy-five percent for both regular and ICU beds, meaning this virus isn't overwhelming the medical system. More importantly, those that are most vulnerable and at risk from COVID have had the chance to get the vaccine and protect themselves. If people don't want to get the shot, that's their decision. But please do not let people who refuse to get the vaccine and protect themselves then say it is too dangerous for students to go back to school. Students are at a low risk of getting COVID and for becoming seriously ill from it. Meanwhile, we lose out academically and socially when we are not allowed at school. Miss Linda Lily from Ypsilanti, with a positivity rate of over eighteen percent, it is ridiculous the Dearborn Public Schools is still face-to-face. It makes no sense that we are three times higher than we original, when we originally shut down. Yet this time, we are still face-to-face despite state testing. We need to pause face-to-face instruction for the safety of all of our staff and students. Safety first. Miss Rene Okanka, I'm a teacher at Fortson High School. I would like to begin by stating. That I love my students and enjoy working for Dearborn Schools. Overall, I feel supported by my coworkers and the administration at Fortson. And our students are some of the best in the state. I teach juniors at Fortson and I care about them deeply. Despite being online, I would like to argue that I've developed a closer relationship with some of my students this year. Than I have in past years in person due to the shared trauma of the pandemic that we are all going through. This is one of the most wonderful years, or I'm sorry, most important years for these kids' academic lives and it hurts to watch their futures be negatively impacted. Although I appreciate the opt-out form sent out to schools, juniors feel pressured to take the SAT since many schools still require it for college admissions. I also recognize that there are not many options since the federal government denied Michigan's request to postpone te- testing. However, other districts in the state have proposed postponed the standardized testing as the state allows them to be delayed until June fourth. Ann Arbor Schools has postponed their SAT testing because it falls within the makeup window of either April twenty-seventh or May eighteenth. Some of my students currently don't feel safe returning to the building when they are experiencing some of the highest COVID positivity rates in the entire country. Some of my students are currently infected with COVID nineteen and cannot test. However, since this is the only free option to take the test that we know, that we know of right now, many are feeling pressured to compromise their values and take the test. Some cannot afford to arrange their own transportation and pay fifty dollars for a test later on. In addition, as the board has stated multiple times, our students' mental health is suffering. Therefore, according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, our students are in no condition to be taking a mentally taxing, high-stakes, draining standardized test. Any data from these tests will no long, will not be accurate measures of the students' learning nor their learning loss from this year. And some of my students are reporting not feeling mentally readily to take the test. This brings me to my call to actions and I'm going to summarize these. Although it's likely too late to do anything about the testing this week, I would like to ask you to please keep what I've said in mind before looking at any standardized test results from our district. As stated above, multiple students that I know in my class are currently infected with COVID nineteen. We know that the new strain is more contagious in youth and I'd like to thank, thank the district for taking mitigation efforts after spring break. However, I would also like to know where the district is getting their current statistics about COVID nineteen infection. Next, I would like to end with a point of information. Fortson High School is the top five largest high schools in the state. Today, we had only eighteen eleventh graders in the entire school out of seven hundred. Seems like the majority is not in favor of in-person learning. I believe that our kids benefit from in-person learning. However, these are not normal times. And in-person learning right now is nowhere near normal. Thank you for your time. Before I hand it back over to Trustee Mosip, we have gotten to the uh, public comments that are anonymous. And based on our legal uh, representatives' feedback, we are not required to read the full comment of anything that is anonymous. So we are just going to summarize the points. Trustee Mosip?
Anonymous comments that say, or Sam along the lines of closing down in-person learning. Zainab H uh, says, opening elementary school full-time. Parents who are worried had the option to sign up online, let other parents that have the option for five days a week. Um, Concerned Parents says, close the schools, uh, COVID cases are too high. Uh, another uh, parent with the same comment along the same lines and same statistics as well. Uh, and Parent says, not safe for teachers. Um, uh, Aman also says, close the schools. Uh, we are in such a surge. We have a lot of cases. Way too many schools need to be closed. That's the end of comments, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. As you can tell, there are many differing opinions about what should be happening with schools. There is not a consensus. Uh, we don't believe there will probably ever be a consensus. We all will continue to do what we is, think is in the best interest and we will do what we can to take care of the kids once they are in our buildings. We also ask the community to do what they can, take care of all of our students and staff outside of the buildings. Next item, please. I'm sorry, Trustee Mosip.
Just one comment, the things that were more specific, there's a few in there. Um, our team will look into those situations and deal with them because they're specific. Other things are more general to the district, so. And we've commented on a lot of those. I just wanted to let the board, we do that every monthly meeting.